This is the regular session of the mayor and council of the city of Bisbee, county of Cochise, and state of Arizona to be held on Tuesday, March 17th, 2020, at 7:00 PM at the City Hall building, 915 South Octoberville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Coronado, would you call a roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Louis Pollock.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacaminos.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hansen.
Here.
Councilmember Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff, Teresa Coleman, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Joelle Landers, personnel director, Jesus Haro, public works director, George Castillo, fire chief, William McDonald, city attorney.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here and for those that are watching while it's being streamed, thank you and certainly my apologies that we're doing it this way, but that we are practicing the CDC and there's a Department of Health Services recommended practices. So with that, obviously, my, the implication for tonight is simply a moment of silence for all of the countries that COVID-19 is ravaging, as well as the United States and even our state of Arizona. So if you would join with me just a moment, please. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little bit of delay.
For anybody who wanted to know, I knew the words. I was waiting for people to catch up. We had a slight delay there. So, so thank you. Under proclamations and announcements, I'm not going to go into different things that I've done in the last two weeks. It's been a long, along the hall, particularly the last several, last week particularly. A couple of highlights, however, because they'll be coming up a little bit later tonight, I had a conference with Senator Sinema yesterday at her request. She wanted the mayors to get together and she wants an ongoing dialogue with the mayors. She brought up some things that I will discuss in just a few minutes under the proper heading. Today, I had a meeting with the governor's office and they are going to be having basically daily briefings of the mayors so that we can keep everybody up to date on what's going on and letting us know what other cities are doing and other counties are doing and also allowing, getting us information about supplies as an example. The, there is a supply of N-95 masks. Both the feds have a supply and the state has a supply. This afternoon, they finally got me the email address to go to, to ask for some. I don't know if this is like the rest of supplies in the state and they hand them out according to population. If they do, then all Cochise County is 3%. But whatever, I want to make sure that I'll get that information so that our first responders have that equipment, as well as I have talked to the hospital and they have some further supplies. Should we run low or run out, then we can rely on the hospital to try to help us out also. So that part has been taken care of. And then at 4:30 this afternoon, I held a briefing with restaurants and bars and according to the call-in, we had 82, which I didn't want to do we had that many, but we had 82 call-in. And I briefed them as to the recommendations and what I wanted to do and as the council to assist on tonight. And again, I'll just bring that up under the proper, under the proper heading. So that's basically what's been going on. It's very, very fluid. It changes almost hourly. And I am being kept up to speed on it and I am getting that information out both on Facebook and certainly to our staff first and then on Facebook. Anything, if any of the council members want to be included on, we're going to have a daily blast go out to the owners of the bars and restaurants, giving them the latest up-to-date. And if you want to be included on that, just let Ashley know and we'll, or if we know that you want to be included, we'll just make sure that the council is included now.
Is this all through Facebook?
No.
No.
No, it's an email blast. Email blast.
This is an email blast.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll get that out then and give you that information. And that's basically where we're at. I have some items to pull. On the consent agenda, I have item number E as in Edward to pull and F as in Frank to pull.
Is that because they're canceled?
Yes.
Is that because they're canceled?
They've asked for them to be pulled because they don't know whether they're going to actually have them. So we might as well not vote on them now because they're going to be changed. So we'll go ahead and pull those. With that, we have four people that have sent, items sent for call to the public and Ms. Joelle Landers will, will read those. So Ms. Landers, I assume you'll provide a name and then go ahead and read it. Thank you, ma'am.
Brad Edwards, council agenda item eight, comments on service fee schedule. Call to the public comments planned for 3/17/20 meeting. After hearing on the TV news out of Tucson today that the Tucson City Council, Council has canceled tonight's meeting, I was hoping that Bisbee City Council would be showing a similar spirit and also cancel its own meetings tonight. I am not feeling at my peak right now and I'm just as happy that my preference before the council is forbidden at tonight's meeting, but there are items I wanted to present for the council's inspection in support of my comments that could be brought to a meeting in another week or, week or more if there had been postponement instead. My comments are addressed to item eight on tonight's meeting agenda. The exact details of this item are not as clear to me as I would wish, and I was expecting to receive clarification during the comment period. That not being possible, I will forge ahead with my own interpretation. Up until several months ago, for a period of more than several years, my limited income level qualified me for a reduced charge for monthly sewer and garbage service. When I received a notice last year requiring recent documentation to be shown describing my income level, I brought in documentation that had the effect of reducing my charge to a level about $20 below what the level now is without any financial assistance at all, but at a level about $20 more than what I had been paying according to documentation brought in for previous years when my fixed retirement income was the same as it is now. What is exacerbating the confusion over what constitutes a uniform rate reduction scaled to income levels is the lack of any document, documented table available for public scrutiny, clearly showing that these charges, these charge scales related to customer incomes. When I requested a table printed on a handout that I could take with me, all I was presented with was a table related to 2020 healthcare subsidies, which was not supposed to illustrate percentage of federal poverty level related to household size, but which does nothing to show the actual city service charge levied below this level for a particular household size. I have had to accept the spoken word of a city employee for what was, for what the monthly charge is in dollars and cents. I have spent close to half an hour combing over your website and have found titles outlining Bisbee Tax Code, Bisbee Contract for Services, Contract for Sewer and Garbage, Low Income SG Application, et cetera, et cetera. But there is no page that I was able to find a link on the city's website, which clearly shows what the actual monthly charges or accounts as their income levels vary above or below poverty levels, either adjusted or not adjusted for household size. In order for the city to be held accountable for a standard charge levy uniformly on specific adjusted income levels, there has to be transparency in making these rates subject to inspection by every receiver of city services. There being a lot of information at the city website, requiring a lot of time and effort to wade through, I might have overlooked a page showing standard charges for sewer and garbage service. If so, I am here requesting that someone send me directions to locate this page. If no page exists right now, when agenda item eight is discussed, there should be a council decision to place such a page at an appropriate location on the city website with an index provided to quickly locate the page. Ken Budge, March 17th, 2020, to mayor and Bisbee council members. I would like to first say I applaud your action to suspend in-person audiences at city council meetings during this extraordinary time. Due to the fact that the city library is closed, which is the means for many residents to communicate with their city, as well as all boards and commission meetings are canceled, I am asking that the mayor do the following. One, for tonight's meeting, to pull and set aside items three, seven, eight, and nine as items that can wait until things get back to normal and the public are once again allowed to attend. It is only right to suspend any non-critical ordinances or actions that are not required for running the city during these unusual times. To take action on such would disenfranchise the right of the public to speak their, speak to their elected officials about these matters. Two, for the mayor to also put on hold all future items that are not essential to running the city. Example, new or revised ordinances, public hearings of any type, work sessions, transfer or abandonment of city lambs or easements, and non-essential resolutions. Three, I believe that taking action on these types of things would not be in the best interest of the city residents at this time. If Mayor Smith does not announce and take these actions, I am appealing to one of the council members with a second by another to make the following motions. I move to table tonight's agenda items three, seven, eight, and nine until such a time we are able to hold council meetings with the public in attendance. I also move to instruct staff to agendize only essential items that are required to run our city in an efficient manner at all future council meetings until the public can attend. Thank you for your consideration. Ken Budge. Stephen Hawken, regarding item number seven. I have read the proposed MOU regarding the interfacility transports. I have some questions. One, there is nothing listed in the fiscal impact section. Does anybody know what the fiscal impact is and can that impact be shared with the council and the community? Two, the number of authorized positions in the fire department, 21, hasn't changed in the last 15 years. The city used to receive around 1 million per year in revenue for EMS. Through seven months, EMS revenue is 350,000 or 31% of the budgeted amount of 1.15 million. Why is this revenue so low and isn't ambulance revenue an important reason why we can't financially support a full-time fire department? Three, in the draft budget for fiscal year 2021, what will be the budgeted amount for ambulance fees? I certainly can't be any, it certainly can't be anywhere near this year's budget if the MOU is adopted by council and in turn, it will exacerbate the already tight general fund budget. This decision is more than a change in protocol. It impacts the entire general fund, both now and in the future. You are considering a step pay program and other improvements in employee compensation, yet you don't have the funding for them, especially if you absorb a steep decline in ambulance fees. I sincerely hope that you either reject this MOU or at least get some answers regarding the risk to the city's general fund so that you can move forward with your eyes wide open. Thanks. Steve Hawken. Claire Chafee, mayor and council. I appreciate you considering the health and safety of our city, using streaming and email form of communication, of course, following our regular call to the public and agenda item, and agenda item three. Three minutes? I ask that you pull items three, seven, eight, nine until such a time when citizens are able themselves to counsel in person. That is open government. This is a very trying time for everyone. Citizens are concerned about what is going on around them, the nation and the world. Asking citizens to just send in an email for non-critical ordinances, work sessions, et cetera, is really unfair. Trying to slide these through now isn't really good transparency. If the mayor does not pull these agenda items, I implore council to make that motion to not do anything until such a time as the citizens are able to attend the meetings. Thank you, Claire Chafee.
Thank you, ma'am. Councils payable?
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of 142,391.70.
Thank you.
Aye, second.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. We have questions. Any questions? Ms. Landers, thank you very much for your assistance. Hearing none, those in favor of paying accounts payable signify by taking aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. Motion carried unanimously. Approval of consent agenda. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on February 18th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. B, approval of the appointment of Jade Lewinstra to the youth council. C, approval of the appointment of Ruby Lewinstra to the youth council. D, approval of the appointment of Angelica Johnson to the library advisory board. G, approval of a liquor license application for Poco located at 15 Main Street, Bisbee, Arizona, Kelly Galigan applicants. Counsel, does anyone wish any of these pulled for further comment or questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, and G.
Second. Motion and second. Ms. Coronado.
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacaminos.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All business. Discussion of possible approval of a notice of intent to adopt ordinance O-20-01, amending the city code section 10.1.8, nuisance. Ms. Coleman?
So the council did consider this maybe two meetings ago and there was concern expressed by Mr. Budge at the time regarding the entertainment district. And William has done some work for us in the meantime. And I'll let William let you know how he addressed those concerns regarding primarily noise in the entertainment district.
Yeah, so I touched on a new section in the proposed nuisance ordinance to have that noise exceeding the property line in the entertainment district should not exceed 100 feet or more at conversational level. In addition to, there is a section in there that speakers or sound amplification equipment shall be directed away from the public or private property and toward the, the subject business.
Great. Questions, council? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move to approve this notice of intent to adopt ordinance 0-20-01, sorry, O-20-01, and then in city code section 10.1.8.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Coronado, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacaminos.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Nay.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Nay.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes four to three. Discussion number four. Discussion of possible action regarding the senatorial request for declaration of emergency. During my meeting, the telephone meeting with Senator Sinema yesterday, she was in Washington. She wasn't here. It was sort of surprising that she asked all of the mayors in the state to declare a state of emergency. Her reason in doing this was so that if we start losing funds, that we then will be able to ask for state and federal assistance. And that is a good idea, but as you recall, from the Star Avenue fire as an example, you don't have to declare the emergency ahead of time. You can wait until there actually is an emergency and declare it and still it's covered. She admitted that this was the case. She just thought that it'd be tidy to do it all now. As a result, and she further indicated that she was suggesting that the mayors declared a state of emergency and then through proclamation, closed bars and restaurants, kept congregation of people to 10 people or less, to include calling the police for enforcement of that. She was asked you talking about houses of worship, even in her answer was yes. So particularly, she was interested in parks. It was brought up about family picnics and so forth. In any event, some of the mayors have in fact declared this state of emergency. Douglas has as an example. I have that authority and I do not want at this time to declare a state of emergency. And I wanted the council to understand that, that with the briefings that I've had, we, there's a total of 20 cases of this in our entire state. Five of them are in Pinellas County in one family. We have a case in Graham County, a case in Navajo County. We have several in Pima County and in Maricopa County, none in Santa Cruz and none in Cochise at this point. There have been 10 people that had symptoms in Cochise of the virus and they've been given tests and all those tests have proved negative. So we are testing under the CDC guidelines and those tests are negative. So at this particular point, it's our business as usual. So what I've done is I contacted the owners of the restaurants and bars because some of them were starting to panic because they are closing elsewhere in the state. As, just as an example, Bisbee Breakfast Club has, there are multiple branches in Tucson and Billy Jerry Bob's is owned by the same individual. As of 8 o'clock tonight, all of those stores are closed. And so those kind of things reverberate through our community. So I discussed this with our people today. Should we go to the next step and that I am required or need to declare a state of emergency? Number one is I would like the council's backing on that. But number two is our restaurants will be ready to go to curbside meal service. And some of them right now will be starting to offer that where you can come on in and dine or you can call and they'll have a to-go ready for you. And then when you get there, you can call and park and they'll run it out. I've talked to the fire chief, I'm sorry, the police chief about the slight holdup in traffic and we don't think that that's going to be a problem at this point for that short period of time of exchange of monies or credit card or whatever that is. If it does, then we, we do something about it at that particular point. So there is, there are game plans here. The, the city is operating as usual. Nothing has changed other than you can see us tonight, we're following the CDC recommended guidelines, but this is a precaution because we do not have a problem. We just want to make sure that we keep it, that we do not have a problem. So that's where we're at. I wanted to make it very clear because people had heard about declarations from other mayors. The mayor in Tucson provided a declaration today. Tucson has closed all of the restaurants and bars except to takeout. As well, movie theaters, everything's closed. I know for a fact that the malls are closed. My daughter works at Macy's and they let her know today that they sent everybody home and they're not going to be open until April 1. So Tucson Mall is closing and all kinds of stuff. We're operational here. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
You're saying that we're operating business as usual, but is the library closed? I mean, I heard it was closed. So then we're not really operating business as usual.
Well, the library's not operating business as usual. That's right. All, all city, our sanitation, our police, our fire, our, our people here are collecting monies, everything. It was felt that locations such as the library in which we have not the ability because of the computers that are used and so forth, to set up a six-foot spacing between people, that it would be best to, to close. And so the, the library is closed. Yes, ma'am.
So.
Yes.
When you spoke with Senator Sinema, and did you make her aware of your position on this?
No, there were several of us that, that indicated that we would be not, that we'd be that we'd be monitoring the situation further. She is aware that there are mayors that are not following this.
My question is, did she push back in any way and try to convince you not to do that?
No, no, she simply indicated that she would be having other briefings in the future and wanted us to join in. She, this is my thoughts, she's in Washington, that's the only reason I brought that up. She's just a little bit, not quite in the middle of everything, as is the governor's office right now and so forth. So I, there's a little lag in information to her, I believe.
May I comment on this issue?
Sure.
You have the authority to do this at any time, it's given to you in the code, it doesn't require our approval. However, I want you to know that in the spirit of unity, in the face of this serious issue, that I respect whatever decision you make because it's yours to make and I'll back you on that. If your declaration comes a week from now, so be it. I won't say that that's the way I would handle the situation, but because you're the person on the spot in case, in the case of an emergency, as a council member, I would back whatever decision you make.
Thank you. I just wanted to make everybody aware, Ms. Jackman, you got a comment?
I have a few questions. So by not declaring a state of emergency, is that going to set us up for any kind of funding that they come down the pipe? I.e. for employees to pay their unemployed people that they're talking about?
No.
Is that going to set us behind the ball?
No.
How is this going to protect us from both borders? We have Naco people crossing back and forth regularly as we do in AP. What protections are we going to have from that and from tourists coming from Tucson that already have cases?
Well, it has, it has no protection.
So how, okay. How do we know with no mass testing, how do we know you and I are infected right now?
Well, we, there isn't a possibility of mass testing. And we don't know, but you're, you're asking these questions, Ms. Jackman, with all due respect, way above my pay grade. Man, this testing is done by county mandate with the specific guidelines of CDC and ADHS, having nothing to do with the mayor or anybody on the council having the ability to override that or change that.
I have just one last thing to say. We will never know if we overreact, but we will always end react.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say that a lot of the restaurants have been taking safety precautions and changing, changing their menus and they've been doing this voluntarily. Nobody's, nobody's forced them into it. And I think that for the most part, we have responsible people running these bars and restaurants. And I think that they're going to try and do what they can mitigate the situation. And so at this point here, maybe it's not necessary, but I certainly would be supportive, you know, at any time, that, you know, because this situation changes by the hour. And I certainly would be supportive of you declaring an emergency if you feel that it's the necessary thing to do.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Let me do a quick follow-up, just as an example. In speaking with the Grand, as an example, they are going to be suggesting to patrons that they do curbside pickup of their food and drinks. And their license allows them to do that. I do know that the governor's office is working with the state legislature on emergency measures in order to actually change some of the restrictions that were in place having to do with liquor laws and a few other things to loosen those up for the time being so that businesses can continue to operate and have a cash flow during times of when things are more difficult to work with. So that is, that is being done and that's one thing that they'll be conveying to me every, every day. Yes, ma'am?
You just mentioned the Grand. Okay, their food, I get, did you say their drinks as well?
I did.
Okay, what's their, what type of license do they have?
I don't, I believe they have the proper kind, but I don't know what that license is by number.
Because I know that when you're up there, they don't allow you to take drinks out even outside the door.
Right.
So how can they get things to go?
Well, we're putting the cart before the horse, if they do that, then they better have the right license or it better be grandfathered or changed rather through the legislature. And the police department will be aware of that. But they specifically indicated today that they would be going to that and indicated that they had the proper licensing to do that.
Okay.
Just one more thing, Councilmember Giacomo mentioned people from Naco and AP and I, and I just wanted to mention that people going into Mexico today had their temperature taken and across the border, so Mexico is taking action on this, I wouldn't worry so much about Naco maybe.
But the United States is not, and that was a concern that was brought up in Douglas when our parents came to the school board.
Which actually has nothing to do with what we're doing here on the city council.
Well, it does with my response to your question, your answer right now. You were saying they're taking it going to us. They're not taking it coming back in?
As a matter of fact, Mayor Oribé asked Senator Sinema yesterday if they were going to close down the borders. And she said that she felt that if any borders are going to be closed down, it would be Mexico closing down the border from us. So it's kind of an interesting situation.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we talk about Tucson, what's some of the larger cities? We're a smaller city and, or a smaller town. And I think our capabilities and people knowing each other and the fact that we have fewer people, and the fact that we have had absolutely no cases in Cochise County, that I think it's inappropriate at this point to close things down. I think that we, that the longer that we can keep people employed, as long as they're taking the precautions for restaurants and so on, in the appropriate time, they know when to go to the, never mind, I'm not going to say that. But anyway, we're a smaller town, so I think it's a little easier for us to control employees.
Mayor, may I just?
Yes, ma'am, please.
So the public library is closed, those employees are working. They are expanding the annex this week and next and also cataloging over a thousand books that were donated to the library. So all of our library employees are working. Queen Mine Tour and Visitor Center are closed. The Queen Mine Tour is doing repairs within the mine and completing their inventory at this time. Even though it's a couple of months earlier than anticipated, it's a perfect time to keep the employees busy. And then Ramon will be assisting with moving the visitor center location to the mining museum. So we do not have any city employees who are without work at this time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for that clarification.
A question for Ms. Jackman. Do you know if the wifi is available surrounding the library? Because schools are talking about going online for the rest of the year possibly. And if that happens, there are children in this town as well as every other town that do not have access to wifi. And I'm just curious if you can still get the wifi, you used to could, you know, like if you parked up there?
Yeah, it hasn't had any change. That, and it's my understanding that spark light is also.
Spark light is going to be putting in hot spots.
She was telling me, thank you, go ahead.
Wifi, wifi, in their, in their vicinity of their office at this time.
Thank you.
So only in the vicinity of their office, not? At this time, at this time, that's what I understand.
They're hoping to expand that to other locations, but the immediate is, that is true.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer one caution. Two cities in Italy responded to this crisis in two different ways. The city of Lodi on February twenty-third locked down their city. On March eighth, the city of Bergamo followed suit. This is a graph of the difference in the infection rate of those two cities. That short period of time resulted in a much steeper curve for the Bergamo as compared to Lodi. So my caution is, don't wait too long to declare this emergency, it's here. And it's just a matter of time before it gets to Cochise and Santa Cruz County. Because we don't know if any people in Santa Cruz County or in Cochise County are infected because there's no effective test to determine that. Sure, ten people have not yet been diagnosed with the disease, but that means very little. So my caution is, don't wait too long before you realize that we have that kind of a crisis here, even though we can't see it. Thank you.
Mayor? Mayor?
Yes.
Just to add to what Mr. Pollack was saying. We had a baseball tournament here over the weekend and San Miguel actually pulled up right away, they still had two games to go. However, Pima, just outside of Thatcher, they were here for the tournament. And one of their school employees has tested positive and so they've been testing the kids. And we don't know how many of those kids that were in her classroom have older siblings that may or may not have been here for the tournament. So, you know, you're hopeful that it never comes, but to sit there and say, well, we're a small town and, you know, we can get a better handle on it. We've already had exposure to Pima where they do have a confirmed case from a school employee. So that's not out of the realm.
You bet, yeah, good.
Along with he said, the mathematical factor is what he didn't get. The reproductive success of this is extremely high and quick. And as he said, you shouldn't wait too long. There's a lot of elderly people in this town and there's a lot of the compromised people in this town.
So you're saying not to wait too long, not to wait too long for a declaration or for closing?
To decide whether you're going to do a state of emergency. You can have ten people one day and then within a short period of time, you can have multitudes of people infected. I'm just saying, just think of the mathematical factor.
I understand what you're saying. But I would be more inclined to not wait too long to close, to close the restaurants.
Well, that's what, yes.
The state of emergency is not going to do that.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, well? Well?
Yes.
Okay, my mistake.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, move on to item number five. Discussion of possible approval for the Visby Arts Commission to sponsor Kate Scott's book on the impact of the border wall and the river and wildlife in the amount of a thousand dollars to publish two hundred copies from the Visby Arts Commission fund. Mr. Higgins?
Yes, this was approved unanimously by the Visby Arts Commission and this is, she has another book out currently on a different topic and her books are a combination of art and also text. And she's studied the impact of the border wall. And this is a nice little book that's coming out and we're, we're very happy that we're able to support her. And so saying that, I move to approve the sponsorship by the Visby Arts Commission to sponsor Kate Scott's book on the impact of the border wall and the river and wildlife in the amount of a thousand dollars to publish two hundred copies.
I'll second that. Thank you. We can, I jumped on that, Ms. Johns can second that. I do have a question. Does the Visby Arts Commission get like a thank you in the?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. The Visby Arts Commission, it will be either on the cover or someplace inside. Oh, yeah, we, we make sure that people know, let people know that where the money came from.
I have a question.
Ms. Jackman?
Is that copy going to go to her local library too?
Oh, probably will. Her other book right now is available at Poco. It's, I think it's twenty books. And so it'll be available around time, sure, absolutely.
Others in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Six, discussion of possible approval for the Visby Arts Commission to sponsor the Central School Project Make Art, no, I'm sorry. No. Central School Project Make Youth Arts Festival twenty twenty in the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars from the Visby Arts Commission fund. Mr. Higgins?
Yeah, this has been postponed, it was canceled at, well, it was canceled when this whole coronavirus thing started. They were quick to do that. But they are going to have it later in the year when things settle down. So by approving this money tonight, it'll mean that they'll, they'll get the money and the money will be spent on the, on the Make Youth Arts Festival at a later date. So having said that, I move to approve the sponsorship by the Visby Arts Commission to sponsor the Central School Project Make Youth Arts Festival twenty twenty in the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars.
Second? Those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item number seven. Discussion of possible approval of a memorandum of understanding related to medical transport service. Chief Castillo and Lieutenant?
Víctor.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. For your interest, pretty much a revival of your medical transport service. First, let me clear the air here with rumors going around. First of all, Arizona Ag was to not approach us on this, nobody from that agency approached us. And also Mayor David Smith had nothing to do with this at all. He did not talk to any member of the fire department or myself on this MOU. First and foremost, the old MOU that we have was done, I believe, in two thousand seventeen for facility transports. Back then, well, the MOU was the, Visby Fire does the first two transports, Arizona Ag was does the third. This was an agreement that we all came together with, but back then Palominas Fire District had a automatic aid agreement with us that was assisting us in the facility transports. So when we got back-to-back transports, if we were already out on one in Tucson and another one kicked out, we were able to call them and they were able to back us up. When Chief Matthews left, Chief DeWolf, now the new chief of Palominas, he exited that agreement with us. He no longer wanted to be involved in this. So we've kind of been on our own for the last couple of years for the first two and it's been very, very difficult for us trying to get out the first two transports. The hospital, for example, can dispatch us out for Tucson transport at say nine AM in the morning and at nine thirty, another transporter will come in. And we are unable to do that because we will not drop below five personnel in the city. The citizens of Visby is our main concern right now. With our fire load in old Visby, we need every firefighter we can get. One of the reasons for this, as I said, is we are unable to fulfill this MOU. My union approached me and the firefighters from the union approached me on some safety concerns with these transports. We've been very, very busy lately, recall loads have been going up. And the guys have been running all day and by the time they get to rest, we're getting dispatched out to transport. A lot of them have been after about eleven o'clock PM midnight as well. So I was putting my guys on the road late at night. I've had some of my members tell me they have witnessed members falling asleep at the wheel. They had several so-called missed accidents with animals. We did have a few accidents with animals, animals we had between Tombstone and Benson. That area is really high risk for deers over there. And like I said, Arizona Ag has came to this agreement with us. We sat down with them and we tried to figure out what was best for us. Douglas Fire has the same situation as we do and they came out with this agreement with Arizona Ag to do all in-county transport. And one of the reasons why is so they can get their crew back to their city in a proper time. They're not gone for five or six hours at a time. They're not gone for five or six hours at a time. We are sending our firefighters, like I said, out of town for about six hours. We have somebody on call, we pay them five hours to take calls. So when I come into, do, I come in to cover for a transport, that's an additional number, or additional five to six more hours that they're at the station. My understanding, we do get paid to take these people to Tucson. On the trip back, it's a non-payment. And half the time, especially if it's an access payment, we're only getting 50% of that payment as anyway. Can you, Adam?
Yeah, I'll go ahead then. We got a few notes here. Just picking off of Chief. Our billing service, as far as our collection rates, it's been approximately 60% collection. Along with that 60%, we do an automatic pickup fee of 936. That 936 is a straight pickup fee regardless whether it goes to Tucson, Servista, Douglas, Benson. Those are the typical usual places that we go to. And within that collection percentage, now Medicare Access, so on and so forth, don't pay that full money. So the only, the only thing that we, it would be losing is the mileage. Now, we put in for a rate increase for the mileage through ADHS, which has been completed and accepted and is under review. Along with that, for us to increase our pickup rate, we had to drop our mileage. That's an automatic that they drop. ADHS, we have no say. We can't pick and choose what our, what our ratings. Along with the insurance, as far as, we'll talk about the mileage now. If we bypass a most appropriate facility, meaning Servista, Servista has the capability, the copper queen, and not call Servista, the insurance company will no longer pay any additional miles past Servista. So our mileage stops, period, at Servista. So the rest of the time is on us. Because we bypassed their most appropriate facility, but we don't have control of that. Because the doctor from the sending facility makes a choice on which facility that patient goes to. Along with this, it's, doing this, we're going to keep our guys. We have a lot of incidents that happens. We're, we're short staffed. They stack up their transfers. We're able to do three Servistas to one Tucson. If you look at that time, that timeline. So we are able to go to Servista, come back, we go again, back to Servista, instead of having to give up our turn. Once we give up our turn, we forfeit that, and the next one still goes to Arizona ambulance, the way it is now. As of September of last year, we haven't been able to do not even 10% of the transfers that's been kicked out due to staffing and vehicle. These long trips to Tucson are just wearing down our vehicles. We have, we got to a point, this last month, where we're getting ready to ask for an ambulance from another department because we had two in the shop and one was starting to build down as well. So we have two ambulances for the whole city. So in the long run, it's going to be, we, what we're also trying to do is, with this, not knowing if we're going to have an ambulance or the staffing that day due to our low staffing, Arizona ambulance is not prepared, nor do they make that staffing available to meet the copper queen's demands. So what we're trying to do is manage this big old mess, as you can say, because we're not being able to fulfill our part. So we're trying to manage it by proposing this MOU. So that way they do, they're able to affect the police staff, the ambulances, and prepare for that call load. So that's, that's what's going to be important for our citizens coming out of Copper Queen. So there's not going to be five, six hour long wait times waiting for an ambulance to come back from Tucson to be able to take them. And another thing I wanted to touch up on. As far as the billing, making over a million dollars in revenue, I've been here for going on nine years now. The only time we've ever got close to that was when the Douglas ER closed down. And that's when we were getting all the patients from Douglas and Bisbee. So I know there's a comment earlier, so I just wanted to share that up. That's not accurate. And as an officer and a union member, we have lived through these transfers since I started. We see the effect that it's having on our department, operations, our staff, our vehicles, community. I feel like we're, if anybody's going to be the most, most knowledgeable on how we run and operate, it's going to be us. Because we live, we live it every day. And we understand how we operate, but people want to see dollar amounts when there's a lot more to it. Like I said, we don't collect 100%. And out of that, we don't even collect 100% of what we're collecting. And while we are running our staff and vehicles to the ground in heavy overtime hours in big garage bills and our supplies for the units, because we don't, we don't build for supplies here. So that's a little bit of that.
Let me just use an example here, get some figures. In 2017, we were able to do 413 transports. Arizona ambulance took 361. 2018, we were only able to do 337. Arizona did 192. 2019, we were able to do 244, Arizona ambulance did 322. As of today's day, we were only able to do 28 transports so far this year. Because right now, I have a major shortage. We are having a firefighting test tomorrow. I need to fill up five positions within our fire department. I had a big loss. I, we hired some people, there was one that got terminated. One left, actually two people left for other departments. I just had another medic with a back injury. He decided to resign because he can't come back. So as of right now, I, and I have one medic that his fiance just had twins, so he's off right now. I have five medics right now working to cover the city. And if I only have one medic on duty, we are unable to take any transport because we have to leave that advanced life support in the city. So right now, we are struggling with personnel. We don't know how tomorrow's going to be. We don't even know how many people are going to show up, how many medics are going to be applying. And one of the hard things for us is trying to retain these firefighters within our city, especially the new people. A lot of that has to do with the pay where we can hire them, we train them, and then they're picked up by other departments. So it's been really hard to kind of maintain our personnel. That's why we've been kind of struggling with these transports. Again, a lot of these are late, late at night. They're getting, we're getting dispatched at, like I said, 11 o'clock at night. We're keeping the guys on the road. And majority of the fires that we've been having here in Bisbee are late at night. So that gives me, like I said, two experienced firefighters in Tucson, where I'm relying on five personnel to fight these fires. The last fire we had with the fatality, we just happened to be lucky. They happened to be coming back from Tucson and they spotted the fire before it got big. If that fire would have happened an hour earlier, it wouldn't have been very devastating. So we wouldn't have all boots on the ground for that fire. Like I said, this, this all just has to do with a lot of firefighter safety. It's like, these guys, for a small city, we run a lot of calls. We are very, very busy. And some of these guys, since we're short staffed, they've been here for three days in a row. And if you're not getting much sleep on these transports, that we can do, they're not, it's not safe to be on the road. I don't want to send an ambulance, especially one of your family members or something, late at night and somebody falls asleep and there's an accident. And then it's on, it's on my ticket, you know, right there. So. Anything else?
Yeah, and then this, this doesn't mean we won't do any Tucson transfers. But I just wanted to phrase that because now we go into on the MOU, the right of refusal. Now, if Arizona ambulance are going to be, be unavailable under a certain amount of timeframe, they have a certain wait time. They defer that transfer to, and vice versa. If we're on a fire and there's this, if this were to go through and there is a Servista transfer, then we can defer that transfer to them so we can keep our personnel fighting that fire. And if they have a long ETA or they're unable to, then they will defer it to us. And then it'll be up, up to us to be able to say, yeah, you're me. And we also, we also still have that verbal agreement that some people don't want to go with a private ambulance or, and the same thing with, they don't want to go with Bisbee Fire. So we want to make, do what's best for the patient. We want to make them to feel as comfortable as can because our whole, our whole mindset is patient care. So if they request either our ambulance, we work together to try to fulfill those requests. So I just wanted to throw that out there because we do want to be there for our community and if they request us as well.
Yeah, like another thing I said, for example, say this client that you want to be transported, you need to be transported to Tucson, you want a Bisbee Fire. If we have the staffing, if we have the rig available and the staffing, we are allowed to take you to Tucson. Arizona ambulance is, is not going to disagree on that. I sat down with the representatives of their, with them. Like I said, there was a lot of bad blood back in the day. I squashed all that because it's all about patient care. So both agencies agreed to work with each other. Either way, if we can't take a transport, they'll do it. If they get back slammed with Tucson transports and we're available to do a Tucson transport, they'll still be available to do a Tucson transport.
Thank you. Questions, Council?
Yes, I came back from United States on Friday and got this packet and noticed this issue and realized I was totally stupid. I had no idea what it was about. So I started investigating Friday afternoon and I spent Saturday doing that. And I spent Sunday doing that and I spent the better part of today doing that. And I wasn't able to determine the veracity of the amount of money that we realized from these runs. And I got good information from you, Mr. Mayor. I got good information from Mr. Pollak. I got good information from a lot of people in this community who have experience with this. The best information that I got was this afternoon when I met with Chief Castillo and Lieutenant V S. Nor. And they spoke to me in language that I understand because I used to be a fire marshal and I supervised a fire chief who had a 50-man 24-hour department. And there were a lot of similar complaints from those guys and they had the resources of the federal government and the state of Arizona. They did not have the problems that this fire department has to deal with every day. It's common to hear people say that, oh, it's a 24-hour fire department. They sit around and watch TV all day. That's not true. That's the farthest thing from the truth. A 24-hour fire department is a tough job. It's hard on the firefighters. It's hard on their families. And I understand that. And I was convinced by listening to this argument that we heard here tonight that even though I'm not a proponent of privatization, it appears that this fire department has a great relationship with a private transport company. And I realize that there's a fiscal issue here, one that I can't put my finger on. But I'm going to err on the side of safety every time. I think public safety is the most important thing that the city provides for its citizens. And I was convinced by these gentlemen that they have a good case here.
Thank you, Mr. Jeff Commandant.
No, Ms. Klein, over. Couple of things on our, on our mileage rate. What is our mileage rate now currently?
It's 16, 16 something right now.
My rate right now is 1673.
And what will it, what will it be if we get the rate increase?
So speaking to the specialists at ADHS, they said it will go lower. That's automatic, especially if we're going to have our guaranteed pickup rate. As far as how much, they don't know yet. They have to audit it and go and they're going to look at our population, all the call numbers and everything. And then they're going to make the suggestion. We can suggest as much as we want, but ultimately they're going to say yes or no. It's going to, but they did say that it is going to go down.
Okay, so, but we don't know how much it's going to be.
No, correct.
Okay, and then base hospital. I know that we had Servistas or base hospital years ago until a former CEO had changed that to Tucson. Is there anything where we could possibly go back to base hospital or Servista?
So we actually, we could, we could always go back. We can do a 30-day notice if that were to be decided. And that was actually a possibility maybe a half a year ago. The two EMS coordinators, myself, Ken Davie and Chief Castillo, had thought about it. And we met, we met with their clinical coordinator as far as Servistas and what they allow, what they don't allow us to do. Now, with, we come to find out with TMC, we're a little bit more freer to, to go by our protocols and not have to call medical direction. That, if that's big for us, especially as the only paramedic on the scene, a lot of times, I'm stuck on the phone trying to talk to a doctor, trying to get permission to provide the care that I already know that I need to provide. I have to ask permission first with Servista. Whereas TMC has standing orders and administrative orders that I can follow without calling. So I can act right away. So me and Brandon, Cap Davie, excuse me, felt like at this time, it's more appropriate to stay with TMC because they let us do everything that Servista let us do before. And they're letting us do more and they're giving us medications that we didn't have with Servista. They're still letting us to do RSI, especially being in a rural community, which is huge. But is it a possibility to go back? Absolutely. And that, that, that can just be done by giving 30-day notice to TMC that we're going to no longer, to set it up with Canyon Vista. So that way we can get our drug boxes and everything exchanged on the same day. So we're not having no meds for a certain period of time.
Okay, and as far as having to go to the closest hospital that can provide that advanced care? Because we do so many Tucson transfers. And bypassing Servista, I mean, I think Benson's a little more limited. But do you, do you guys have the call to say, I'm sorry, but, you know, we don't feel that this is, this warrants a trip to Tucson, that, you know, Canyon Vista can't handle this?
Unfortunately, we do not. That, that call is made from somebody that's a higher level of care than me. I cannot diagnose as a paramedic. So that call is made from, and what needs to happen is that that doctor calls another doctor. And a lot of the, a lot of times what's happened in the past is doctors work, come and work from other hospitals and they know their capabilities. And a lot of times they don't check with Servista. But we have no say in them bypassing Servista. No, can we make the call? The only time that we can divert to a closest nearest facility is if our patient starts going south. So then it's immediate life and death situation. And we go to the next appropriate higher level of care. And then to answer for Benson, the ones that usually go to Benson are going to be your, your psychiatric patients and so on and so forth. And those ones are 100% will pay out. As far as the collection rate because of the psychiatric, they, they're 100% will pay.
Okay, and then staffing. So we're down five, she said?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead. I'll, or whoever.
So is this going to be reassessed, say, a year down the road? Let's say you guys get five more, more manpower. Are you guys going to go back and reassess this and think about going back to what it was? Or is this something you plan to stay in permanently?
No, I don't, I don't think we should stay on anything unpermanently. I think we should always, we should always reassess as, as things change. That's a smart way to do it. Because if we do have the capabilities to be able to do more, then maybe we can go back to like a one-on-one instead of a two-on-one and see how that works and whatnot. So as far as mine and the chief talk about this, this could be always changing. And we get to talk to Paul Peterson and on the MOU if, if we need to go back and we use this MOU, we can have each other go to the MOU again. Or if there's any disagreements or anything, then we can come back and talk to them, make it to the table.
You keep talking about you guys are only recovering 16%. Are you on a different collection plan than the city's other bills or you guys use the same plan?
No, we, we do, we have a different company. It was, now it's AMV. So they haven't started yet. Always using our previous collection company.
Amazon, sir?
Amazon, sir. And that was their collection percentage. AMV, and that was their collection percentage rate percentage. Uh, and from my understanding, that they were one of the highest, as far as collection, so, they, they do our billing for us, the city.
And I guess my last question, um, so this is technically based on the fact that we're five men down, right? That we don't have the appropriate, um, manpower?
No, not necessarily. Um, this, because even with the manpower, um, and full staff and all, our ambulance healthy, we were, we're supposed to be doing, doing the two-to-one, but that was actually reversed. They were doing two, to our one, if that, if we were able to. So, um, they were, we're only doing approximately thirty percent of the transfers. So we weren't even being able to meet that MOU when we were fully staffed, and had our ambulances, uh, in service.
Right, and that goes back when Palominas was involved.
So, Pal, when Palominas was in, that was right after that, when Palominas was involved, we were able to take a lot more, because we utilized our ambulances, along with their ambulances, I think, and mix up personnel one-on-one.
Right.
So, we used two for one, uh, one transfer now, and we can take two transfers by using our G, when we used it. But we also had to pay them as well, so, we didn't get all that money back, and then we had to give some of that to Palominas instead of keeping it here, so.
A lot of the issues as well is, um, we are short paramedics, and I'm gonna say a good ninety percent of our transports are ALS, that's life support. Um, when we are short, if we have our medic on call, then we could send an ALS transport out to Tucson. The fact is, uh, we get slammed with, say, a major car accident or something, now we have one ALS. Now, if I, we just did Sierra Vista, my ALS, ALS guys in Sierra Vista, something kicks out here, it's about twenty-minute response back here, where you're looking at Tucson, I got an hour and a half, to two hours to get back to, and if there's traffic, or, and we've had, coming back from Tucson, there's been accidents on the ten, where my guys have been stuck on the interstate, for a couple more hours delaying them getting back to quarters as well. So, once, you know, we, I do try to send somebody every year to paramedic school, I do have one of my employees right now in the med school, and I plan to send another one eventually, but I said it's just hard to retain our paramedics right now, and that's what makes it very difficult.
So then I guess the issue along the lines is, when budget comes up, we need to look at an increase in pay in order to keep up here, instead of losing our workers?
Well, when I, according to the budget, I did put in something for pay raises, I mean, I don't know if that's gonna go through or anything like that, but I'm, I'm trying to compensate my, uh, employees, so we have some retention there.
First of all, thank you both for bringing this up, because this has been a, a concern of mine since you started doing all of these runs, was overworking the guys, especially when you didn't have the staff. And every time I asked a question, it was, "Okay, we're fine." Well, I'm not sure really sure that that was true at, at that point, but I appreciate your, your honesty and bringing it up, so that we can, uh, take a look at it and do something about it. Um, on the paramedics, how many of those, that, or, you said two went to other stations, was it after their two-year?
Correct, some of them were hired as paramedics, um, but all of them have been after their two-year. And that's kind of, for paramedics, it's kind of, uh, the comment, is they do their time, usually, and then, uh, with, if they need, I mean, uh, we're, we're the lowest paid by far in the, in the county, so, I mean, for them.
Oh, wow.
And, and they're, they get a lot of experience, and a lot of the other departments really value the guys that they get from us, so, I, I don't blame them, I wish I could.
Yeah, there's, for example, um, to go to paramedic school, it takes about a year and a half, um, your days off, when you get your four days, you're pretty much doing ride times with other departments, or you do a clinical, so it's pretty much for a whole year and a half, uh, you're waiting. You're either at work, or you're at school, or, or something, so you're away from your family. And after completion of all that and hours, all that time, they get one dollar more to. And it's, it's just, you know, it's really hard on them, but we do have some paramedics that, um, you know, they've been offered other jobs, um, but they decided to stay here, because this is, this is their home, and this is where they, um, wanna be, for example, Lieutenant Viasenor's a paramedic, he's very skilled, um, trust me, there's other departments that are after him right now, but he's committed to stay here, because it's from Bisbee, and he wants to stay here and represent his community.
When you were talking about the different, or the number of, uh, transports that you did, um, from two thousand seventeen, or seventeen to, and, uh, twenty twenty, were all of those to Tucson? Or they're?
No, they're, they're, they're a mixture between Tucson and Canyon Vista, and there's also some in Benson as well. And they also, actually, to, uh, there is some also, to like Douglas, the, um, what's that called?
Haven.
Haven, yes. So not all, not all the transports are actually to hospitals, some are just to, like, you know, some rest homes as well.
Um, I have a question for, um, Ms. Coleman.
Yeah.
On, if, if this, uh, MOU goes through, what is the financial, how, how is that?
That's okay, well, okay. Um, so right now, uh, because it's a mix of tran- uh, transfers, so, um, we can't say specifically if we didn't go to Tucson, that we wouldn't pick up a transfer or replace it. Um, I'm budgeting based on the history for the fire department, so, uh, the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen actual ambulance fee income was six thousand six hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars. Um, year to date, we're on track to notch that, so we actually were, um, realistically over budgeted, um, for ambulance fees in the current year's budget. So I'm not indicating the financial impact, based on the fact that we're on track for what we received actually in the previous budget year. It will be the, the same, the income will be the same.
But, but we budgeted, we budgeted.
We budgeted for, um, more than was most likely realistic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, that you won't act the rest of the year?
Budget accordingly. Uh, let's see, what I have. I'd like, here it goes, so I'm gonna have to look through. Um, the fire department is under budget. And miscellaneous revenues, looks like they're okay right now. So we also don't, for the transfers that we don't take, we also do not incur the expense of the paramedics, or the EMTs who are actually making that trip, or the gasoline, or the wind, or vehicles as well, so, it looks like we're in pretty good shape.
So I also believe, especially since September, we haven't even been doing ten percent because of our staffing and our vehicle issue. I believe that once we have our staffing and vehicles in place, being able to do the service of it might actually benefit those numbers, because that's how it is as of now, since September, we can't even do ten percent. Then that's because we just don't have the people.
Yeah, it would be helpful to have the, uh, the financials in this packet to, um, just for a better idea of, of what's going on, where we're at. And, to me, of course, it's always going to be about safety. Safety issues, especially for our guys and gals, and for, for our patients. And, and, and really, so that should, I mean, I know that this is the MOU, this is a separate issue, I understand that. Um, but I think we really need to be, as a council, we really need to be looking at vehicle replacement. This came up in our strategic plan, on.
We're, we're, Ms. Klein, we're, we're gonna get off, that's not on the agenda, so we're gonna get off the topic.
Okay, um, safety of the vehicles?
No, no, ma'am, vehicles, vehicle replacement.
Okay, again, we're talking safety issues. We've had ambulances break down coming back from transfers. We have ambulances that have no less than two hundred and fifty thousand miles. You know, the, the fire department didn't get the, the.
Ms. Klein, I will tell you, this is off-topic for this MOU, the MOU is what's in front of us.
So we can't talk about safety issues for our firefighters?
No.
Or for the patients they're transferring?
That does not have to do with this MOU. I'm only trying to keep us out of trouble, Ms. Klein.
Is a lawyer on play?
Yes.
Is, uh, she going off-topic?
Yes, this is outside the scope of the topic.
Thank you.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding related to the medical transport services.
Second.
Ms. Corinna.
Mayor Protem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
And to protest, aye, but need to bring up safety issues.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes, if you can handle this.
Is that funny, do you find that funny, that I question safety issues?
Aye, I believe it's reasonable, I think.
Thank you, Mayor, for the, Mayor Council.
Thank you, guys. Item number eight, discussion of possible approval of the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O twenty dash oh four, amending the city code to repeal and remove fees within the city code and approval of the city fee schedule, Ms. Coleman.
Aye, so I think this is probably the third or fourth time this has been on the agenda. Um, we've made adjustments based on, on comments that we received, uh, from council members, um, and from the public. Um, we did note that, um, there was one line item that did not, um, show in your first packet, correct?
Yeah, on page two of the actual fee schedule. Um, the second, third line down, excuse me, it says, it has the figure of twenty-five dollars per hour. Um, for some reason, and we do not know why, the name of what that, that charge was for has dropped off, and it was for a clerical fee. We don't have any way of charging clerical fees currently, and so this will allow us to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Council. Um, and then I did wanna, just specifically in answer to, um, one of the comments I called from the public, um, point out that, um, we've made it very clear about how the reduced rate fee would be calculated, um, and that's for people who are, now I'm gonna look at it. I'll read it right from here. So it'd be a sixty percent and a third, or a thirty percent reduction, based on whether or not they're a fifty percent or a hundred percent of the, um, poverty rate. So it'll be a very simple calculation, it won't require a separate schedule to figure out what we call I four, just be a simple calculation.
Can I ask you a quick?
Yes, ma'am.
One of the concerns that's been voiced over and over again, as this is that twenty-five dollar fee, that it's in violation of state statute, that is not connected to the initial paperwork, correct? It is at the actual timeframe for the personnel that is legal under the statute, correct? That charge?
Yeah, so that is our, um, understanding from council, that that is a fee that we can include on our schedule. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Eh, I have another question, is, um, is there any reason that this, um, can't wait until the next time we pay, in two weeks?
It, actually, this is, um, your notice of intent, so we could put it on your, we could notice it and put it on your agenda, um, for a future meeting for actual adoption. Um, it has been on the agenda for, at least three times. At least three times before this, this would be the fourth. So there have been opportunities for public comment, um, it's not a surprise that we've been working on this for six months.
It's also been posted on our front page of our website since November.
So, uh, so this is just your notice of intent tonight, it's not the actual option tonight.
Do we have a motion? I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance zero dash twenty dash oh four, amending the city code to repeal and remove fees within the city code and approval of city fee schedule.
A second.
Ms. Corinna.
Mayor Protem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes six to one. Item number nine, discussion of possible approval of the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O twenty oh five, amending article eleven point three point four of the Bisbee City Code entitled Library Fees and Collections Policy, and Providing for Repeal and Cerebrity, Ms. Coleman.
So this goes hand in hand with the fee schedule, the fee schedule does, um, refer to, um, repealing other references in the code to fees and fines. Um, the library, however, we were able to clarify, uh, the programs that are available in the fee schedule, and then also allow them to charge for some supplies, uh, and services that were not included in ordinance. Um, this was easy language to clean up right away, um, so we're just proposing, let's clean up, uh, um, fee, uh, references in the ordinance for changing to library while we have this opportunity.
Questions? Do we have a motion? I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance, uh, zero dash twenty, dash zero five, amending article eleven point three point four of the Bisbee Co- City Code entitled Library Lines and Collection Policies, Policies and Providing for Repeal and Cerebrity.
Seven.
We have a motion, we have a second, Ms. Corinna.
Mayor Protem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes six to one. Number eleven, city managers report.
Uh, ten.
That's eleven.
Could somebody else's?
Ten, uh, item ten.
Yes, I see.
Okay, sorry. So, item ten, um.
I was just trying to.
You're testing me, am I still right?
Discussion, item number ten, discussion of possible correction to staff regarding the preparation of one or more propositions for the twenty twenty general election to amend the TPT, also known as transaction, transaction privilege tax.
The city currently has a one percent sales tax in place, um, that actually is good through, um, the next election cycle, when it would need to be renewed, um, based on the way that it was adopted initially. Um, there is an opportunity for the council to put that on the ballot this time, to make that permanent, um, pretty much the same way that you're doing with the bed tax increase. Um, and then I also wanted, um, to present you also with the opportunity to talk about an additional one percent sales tax, um, perhaps, uh, based on some conversation you've had, um, this evening, to, um, support public safety.
Can I, that's a question?
Yes, ma'am.
With this test, can it be specifically, hypothetically speaking, it passes, you know, it goes through, can we specify exactly what it's supposed to go to?
Yes.
This percent has to go to, you know, the walls that are falling down?
We, we did, we did that, uh, Ms. Giacamino, with the, uh, streets and infrastructure.
Yeah, right.
So your current one percent is for the streets, and it goes specifically into that budget?
So, and if it's, and increase, my point is, is some of that gonna go to strictly walls, since they seem to be?
That would be yours?
That's what I'm saying, I'm pointing to the camera, yeah. And another percent goes to replacing, you know, vehicles for, you know, our, our public safety, I mean, that's something we need to decide, that's my question.
Yes, and then you would put that on the ballot for your constituents.
So that's, that would be written into that, that, okay, that's my idea, okay, thanks.
Question?
You're talking about a separate one, not, not all three of those in, in the same?
You're talking about a separate one, not, not all three of those in, in the same?
I'm wanting them all to be included, yes.
For an, in one percent or in an increase?
In an increase, yeah. A percentage of, of portion of it to be designated so that it's covered. Instead of all just going to one pot, because we have some things that we need fixed. Okay, does that make sense?
Just clarify.
No, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe I need clarification.
Sure.
So what we currently have, yes, we know that goes to streets and infrastructure.
Yeah.
This additional one percent, will it still go to that or does it go to public safety?
That's what you, that's up to the council. It's, it's a possibility. Um, Councilmember Giacamino has indicated some other possibilities and then it also would go to your, um, voters.
You see, there's.
But streets and infrastructure, that would cover retaining walls now, is that part of the infrastructure?
It, it only rea- it only covered retaining walls, Ms. Klein, if they impacted the street. And all retaining walls don't impact the street. And so that was the, that was the distinction that was put in in order for it to pass. That was the exact language that was put into the ballot, was that it had to impact the streets. So we would have, there's, what we're looking at is, one, letting it sunset and not have it any. Two, would be bringing it back again for a special purpose, maybe streets and all retaining walls, you could say that. And then a separate one for public safety and school launches or what, whatever. That's up to the council. Yes, sir?
The streets and infrastructure tax that's on the books right now, uh, goes through two thousand twenty-three.
Yes, so there would be another opportunity to vote on it, or you could go ahead and make it permanent at this time. Um, because what I understand now from your bed tax is that action wasn't taken, it was allowed to sunset and now we're, we're legal again.
We can make it permanent.
Yes, exactly.
And then, and then are you talking about another one percent or about that?
That's for you to talk about.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna do that, okay?
I'm not. The, the city manager brought up the potential.
It's an opportunity.
That is correct.
It's an opportunity.
And it, and this motion that would be made here would direct the staff?
This is just direction, yeah.
To go ahead and prepare the two.
Yeah, well, yeah. Given, the direction could be, now give it one second, ma'am. The direction could be, let's prepare it for a one cent to, to make this one cent that we already have permanent. And let's also bring up another one for an additional cent just to see the physical impact of that. That's not meaning that we're going to pass it.
No, I understand that. You don't need to be defensive. I'm just trying to be clear, clear in my mind. If we make one permanent, okay, the infrastructure tax, we still have the option of implementing another one cent tax independent of that permanent status.
Yes, sir.
More questions?
Ms. Giacamino.
I think the point I should make is we have three very important things that we need to address. Our streets, all the ways, the infrastructure with the walls and our public safety.
Sure.
And we need to have some kind of funding for those three things. And this is probably the easiest way, but I just wanted to make sure it would be written to clarify that to the public because that is the public's concern right now. These are the ones that are talking to me.
And, and, and it's a good concern. But I think that we have been able to demonstrate to the public our word because of the last one cent sales tax going to streets, it hasn't been in the general fund used for other things. And so that's what's important is the public can at least now, I, I, I know that in years past said things like, wow, they used, they said that, but then they used it for something else. Well, this, the, this group of councils have used it for the purpose that it was intended, so. Uh, maybe, maybe, uh, have an understanding then that we can ask staff to give us two proposals?
Can I, I want to let the thing clarify?
Yes, ma'am.
So this is, I guess, where I'm missing the boat. Um, when you write a grant for something, you have to spend the money on that. I mean, if this is designated for it, how could it even go into the general fund legally?
Oh, well, it, it, it can't.
Oh, okay, that's, okay, that's why we have this whole.
But see, you use that last word, legal. It can't legally.
Okay.
But at the same time, it's not an enterprise fund per se. Okay.
We will work on it.
You, you, you now have a direction?
Yes.
And I wanna jump right to, uh, skip everything, item number eleven.
Thank you. Um, e-sweats update, um, the council did approve, um, some hybrid vehicles for the business department, um, along with some pickup trucks. Um, due to, um, some manufacturing, uh, glitches, um, those vehicles will most likely be delivered in the next fiscal year. So we will budget for those accordingly. Um, in the meantime, um, we may be able to make some substitutions on the pickup trucks, um, which won't cost any more. Um, hopefully, um, actually be a savings over what was approved on the pickup trucks. So I just wanted to let you know that. Um, we did renew the inmate labor contract. There was no change, um, to the terms of that contract. So we have suspended that. And, um, then I did ask Mr. Carroll to come, um, just to talk to you about garbage and recycling plans. Um, those are some of our employees who are the most exposed um, to items that have been handled by the general public.
Welcome, Mr. Carroll. Long night for, for.
Thank you.
For your daughter.
Um, yes, um, as Ms. Coleman mentioned, um, due to the, um, COVID nineteen pandemic, um, we are looking, we are going to be making some temporary changes to our sanitation department, um, our trash collection. Um, we are going to try to maximize our mechanical pickup so that we can minimize the physical contact our staff has with trash. Um, so that being said, in old Bisbee, we currently pick up trash at, go up, walking up the stairs, we do that by hand. Um, we are going to, for, uh, through the end of the month temporarily, um, we're going to be placing dumpsters along, um, strategically placing dumpsters along, um, Tunstall Canyon and Rury Avenue. Um, we're going to be asking that the residents bring their trash into those dumpsters so that we can mechanically to pick, pick up the trash. And again, minimize the physical contact our staff has with trash. Um, recycling, we, our goal is also the same. We want to minimize the amount of, um, contact that our staff has with tr- with recycling. Um, unfortunately, we do get a lot of trash within our recycling desk. Um, we're, we'll continue our recycling is, and what we're, we're going to ask is that we, um, residents bring their recycling to our recycling station. And we will have our staff here assist with the sorting of that so that when people come, they're, they're placing their recycling materials on the appropriate bins and then we can mechanically compact those. So again, we're trying to minimize the amount of con- physical contact with, with trash. Um, one, the last thing I wanted to, um, ask the residents is that, um, with the shores toilet paper, I'm sure that a lot of people are using wet wipes or bathe wipes. I'd want to make sure that, that people understand that those do not break down, um, in our sewer collection system. And oftentimes are the, the cause of our, our sewer backups. Please do not flush those down the toilet, um, put those in the trash. And again, that's where we would want to minimize our contact with trash. You want, have any questions?
Uh, we, we, we're really not supposed to ask what, that's supposed to ask.
Okay. No, okay, I just wanna see.
I'll ask you after.
Yeah. Okay, if you do that offline without two other council members there, that'd be.
Okay, we can do that. Well, that's, that's the update as far as our, our sanitation and the request for our sewer collection.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll, appreciate it. And with that, Mr. Higgins?
Aye.
Move to adjourn.
Same.
Thank you. Uh, those in favor of adjournment say goodbye by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mayor Leslie? Those opposed, nay? The, uh, we stand adjourned. Will, thank you, sir.
I thank you as well, Mayor Council.
Thank you, Lasley.